I don't even know, I didn't look at that.
What is that? The invoice?
No, I think it was fine.
Jen, how are you?
It was fine. Yeah? No, I don't feel bad. Talk about it, Paul's sliding. Yeah.
There's a registration exchange. Oh, I got the first ticket. I'm checking.
Yes, oh yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm better than this.
I'd be mad.
I mean, no one wants to leave to play pickleball, right?
Right. When you use the Santa Margarita or...
Is that even...
Italian, happy year, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm on my way.
Thank you for attending the October 22 Fisher City Council meeting. First item is announcement with regard to pickleball. Nope, so let's see, let me make sure I got this right. Yes, pickleball, yes, pickleball.
This and that are going down here.
So, I'd like to ask Sarah Sanquist, our Parks Director, to come forward, share a little bit about some exciting news of some residents who have stepped forward on behalf of City of Fishers.
I hope you have some video of the mayor playing pickleball. Do you have?
I can't believe we have to...
Is there some video we could show?
It was a close match.
Close match?
Yeah.
It was not that close.
It was Brandon's fault.
No. Come on now, Scott, we're a city of champions, come on.
So, Brandon let me down.
Brandon. All right. Here we go.
Just wait five minutes.
I'm Lisa Knowles, I'm the President of the Fishers Parks and Recreation Foundation. And the Parks, the Park and Recreation Foundation, our mission is to give our community opportunities to support the continuing legacy of world-class parks. So, it's a way to connect our community to our Parks Department and give them some chances to contribute to projects that they really love. So, this year, the pickleball courts out at Cynthia M. Park, I don't know if you know, have been super popular. If you've ever been out there, they have paddles lined up for who's playing for hours. It's amazing. I have not ventured into that, but it was fun to watch the mayor play and some of our donors. So, initially, the Parks Department had a plan to add two more courts this year and then another two in the coming years. But we had some avid pickleballers, but that was not quick enough. That was not soon enough. And so, with community enthusiasm and some, I'm gonna say skilled pickleball donors, but we were able to speed up that process and save the city some money too by just having to do it once. So, we were able to add four additional courts, and they're almost done. I think they're...
Just putting the final touches on them.
Yeah, and they should be done real soon, and they're ready to play. We've heard tons about them. So, tonight, we just want to thank really quickly our donors who donated over $1,000, and we have some nice certificates for them. So, first on our list are Larry and Teresa Amick. Do you guys wanna come up? We keep clapping. You're welcome. You're welcome. And Steve Cage. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Cage.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. And is Dr. K here from Central Indiana Orthopedics?
Thank you.
And then Terry and Deborah Collins weren't able to attend tonight, but also is Joy Davis here? From IU Health and Saxony Hospital, they were also great donors for us this year. So, we just want to encourage everyone to head out, enjoy the pickleball courts. Maybe the mayor will come play with you, I don't know. But, maybe.
Sounds like it's an easy win against them, so you might as well...
Right. Yeah, thank you. We... All right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Probably eighteen.
Todd?
Todd? If I could make a side comment about pickleball...
Let's start the timer on Brian.
Yeah. Three years ago, the mayor was running for election, and he came out to Britton Falls, where I live, and we're standing there, and he's campaigning, and he said, "What can I do to get votes from Britton Falls?" And I said, "Just build a pickleball court." And he said, "What's a pickleball court?"
I do want to say, um... The, I have to give a lot of compliments to our Parks Department and the Parks Foundation. You know, it was only a few years ago we actually started having a Parks Foundation. And for them to nurture the relationships with folks here in our community, to have folks step forward and contribute money to be a part of our city, to progress the Parks Department. Lisa and the team at the Parks Foundation, thank you for all of your efforts. Sarah, I appreciate your leadership on this, and I look forward to seeing the courts done. And frankly, I think it sets a new bar for where we can go with residents voluntarily deciding to be a part of this broader vision of creating a quality of life here in our city. So, it is exciting to see, we have a police foundation, we have a Parks Foundation, we have a fire auxiliary, I mean, all of those demonstrate just the type of, the caliber of the community we have here when we mobilize them towards a common vision.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Next, Sarah, you wanna come back, are you coming back up for a recognition of Parks donors, or do we just do all that?
That was, I think, the whole thing.
That was the whole thing? All right, all right, good. All right, moving on, presentations, Nickel Plate Arts Award. Leah?
Hi, for the record, Leah McGrath, one of the deputy mayors here for the City of Fishers. And I know Councilwoman Kobel was at the Nickel Plate Arts event representing the city. I think John Weinbart was there as well, and maybe some others. But we have come a long way in our efforts around art, and we're just so honored and wanted to present this award to you as the City Council tonight, to receive the Nickel Plate Arts Emerging Art Award this year. And so, you can see this here, you can pass it around. But also, really exciting for the City of Fishers in the recognition was that the Educator of the Year, Mr. Jeremiah Fallis, is also from HSE schools and representing really well. So, as we look at all the things happening here, we wanted to take a moment to recognize the work that you've done to make this possible, and also our Educator of the Year, who is here. I'd like to invite him to come up and say a few words as well, and then Councilwoman Kobel as well too. Great?
So, as you said, thank you. My name is Jeremiah Fallis, I'm a social studies teacher at Hamilton Southeastern High School, and I was honored to win the first-ever Arts Educator of the Year Award last year, or last month. Basically, in my spare time, I'm a sculptor, I'm a commissions artist for Lucasfilm and movie and film and TV, and I also work on movies as a production designer. Last year, I worked on a film that won the Heartland Film Festival Audience Award. So, in 2002, I made a club at the school where we kind of studied and discussed classic films, and then over time, we began to make short films. And then we decided about five years ago to try something new, which was to create feature-length films. And the idea was that every year, schools do plays and musicals, but what if we made a movie? And a lot of those student productions use things like pre-existing scripts and costumes and songs, but what we do is, we do it all from scratch ourselves. The idea was, we have so many talented kids in our building and so many great resources, what if we just pooled them together? And we grabbed the best writers, the best artists, the best actors, and we put them together, and the kids, they finance the movie, they plan it, they budget it, they location scout, they act, they edit, they write the music, they do the posters, they do the PR, they do all of it. The first year, we didn't finish it, because there's always pitfalls with this, but for the last four years, we've actually finished a feature-length film every year completely done by the students. No other high school in the country does this annually, and we were contacted by Indiana University because they were like, "How do you do this every year?", let alone with high school kids. So, now IU's gonna model their program after what we're doing at HSE. And we just started all over, all those kids have gone off, I've got kids at NYU and UCLA and USC studying film, and we started all over again this year on day one with thirty scripts, and we just cast the movie and we start production next week, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And that's one, I mean, he is one of the main reasons why I think every one of our schools in our district were named Gold Star Schools, I don't know if I'm misquoting that, but I think every single school, and that, that is the backbone and foundation of a great city. So, thank you for what you do and how you give back to our young people.
Yes. Cecilia?
And I had the honor of accepting the Champion of the Art Award for the City of Fishers, and it's just incredible what we are starting to do with regard to the arts, the performing arts and the visual arts, and it is, it is just spectacular. I don't know, Leah, if you can share a little bit about some of the recent updates with our cultural trail and our cultural district destination, designation?
So, as you may recall, we did submit the Nickel Plate District as a statewide cultural district to the Indiana Arts Commission. We have made it through Phase One, or, I'm not sure, I think it is sort of the first round, and we'll be hosting the Art Commission Selection Committee this Wednesday in the Nickel Plate District, actually. So, we're really excited and hopeful about that, and hope to learn through this process either way, to help inform the Art Commission that will be established in January. So, really excited to keep working toward that.
Wonderful. It's exciting, so congratulations to the city and to Jeremy.
Excellent. All right, moving on to the Fishers Citizens Government Academy Graduation, Dan?
Good evening, Council. For the record, Dan Dapsik, Fishers Parks and Recreation. I am the Program Manager for the Fishers City Government Academy, which is a ten-week program that gives residents here an inside look at how their local government operates. One week, they can be hanging out with our Parks and Rec Department, checking out new facilities and learning about the role that we try and play here in our community. Another week, they could be making sure they're wearing cruddy shoes to walk out to the wastewater treatment plant and find out a little bit about what happens after you turn your faucet on and off. And then another week, they'll be visiting with Judge Hanke and talking about his philosophy and what his role is in the justice system and here in Fishers locally. This evening, I have the honor of presenting the graduates from our first-ever Fishers City Government Academy Summer Session, which we partnered with Britton Falls on. So, we have fourteen graduates here that went through the program, not all of them can make it tonight, but I want to make sure that their names are on record because it is a significant time commitment, and they're phenomenal examples of people who just want to get to know their community better and get involved. Graduates have gone on to do a lot of things, serve on City Council, co-found Launch Fishers, just a ton of stuff, and the program means a lot to us. So, with that, Council President Zimmerman, if you don't mind joining Mayor Fadness down here. Graduates, as I read your name off, if you don't mind coming up for your customary congratulatory handshake, we'll do that, we'll get a quick picture, and then we'll meet back out in the lobby for a couple other pictures and just some follow-up. So, without further ado, if you can come up, if you're here and join us, Marilyn Asaby, Katherine Thompson, Terry Thompson, Eric W. Smith, Gary Angeline, Lenny Scott, Connie Lightfoot, Tracy Erickson, Sam Malone, Larry Rash, Mickey Luth, Gary Van Gordon, Dan Crich, and Paul Taylor. Ashley, would you mind grabbing a picture for us? Our City Government Academy class.
Squeeze together. Here. Give me this way. Okay. How are you?
Let me hit this point.
There we go.
You can do it too. Give it up for it.
Why?
Absolutely. We don't need to have it. Whatever they can sit there, whatever. Sit there.
Leah, I was wondering if you and Jeremy would want to come up also to get a picture with the mayor with the awards?
Go on up there with them. Go on up there, get your picture.
Make sure you get that boot in the picture.
Yeah. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the Finance Committee Report. John was gonna give the updates.
Certainly. Councilor Stoller cannot be with us for our budget financing, she is our chair, and so I kind of took over, ran the meeting on October the 10th, and we discussed a number of topics, some that, two items that were passed, Item 10 on the agenda tonight, which is Requesting Approval of the 2019 Fishers Budget, we recommended that for approval to our council. Also, Item 15, Professional Resolution appropriate issue sewer funds, recommend that to our, to the other items, Item 11, Item 12, Item 13, Item 16, Item 18. We've not had the actual documents for us to approve, have recommendation for approval to council, so we did not approve or, we did not approve or disapprove anything, we moved it forward to council for their approval this evening.
Thank you very much. Nonprofit Committee Report, Pete.
Thanks, Todd. Again, the Nonprofit Committee, which consisted of myself, Cecilia Kobel, and Brad Reamer, met again this year to go ahead and put out some money, which was so graciously set aside in our budget. I want to remind everybody on this non-profit, and the three folks who are on the committee with me, you know, we're not a foundation, we're not a trust, we're not a, you know, it's not our job to distribute tax money back out to non, you know, non-profit groups. However, you know, with a direction that we have some money in the budget and we feel that making sure some of those folks who are out in our community affecting a lot of residents, in other words, it's substantive, okay, and it will have an impact, was really what guided our decisions in terms of this budget. So, I'm gonna read the names of the folks that, that got funds from us this year, there was a lot of folks who, who went ahead and applied again, but again, we wanted to make sure that we were being impactful and substantive as it related back to the taxpayers who were actually, you know, that's where this money...
So, as we look at all the things happening here, we wanted to take a moment to recognize the work that you've done to make this possible and also our Educator of the Year, who is here. I'd like to invite him to come up and say a few words as well, and then Councilwoman Koppel as well too.
So, as you said, thank you. My name is Jeremiah Fallis. I'm a social studies teacher at Hamilton Southeastern High School, and I was honored to win the first-ever Arts Educator of the Year Award last year, or last month. Basically, in my spare time, I'm a sculptor. I'm a commissions artist for Lucasfilm and movie and film and TV, and I also work on movies as a production designer. Last year, I worked on a film that won the Heartland Film Festival Audience Award. So, in 2002, I made a club at the school where we kind of studied and discussed classic films, and then over time, we began to make short films. And then we decided about five years ago to try something new, which was to create feature-length films. And the idea was that every year, schools do plays and musicals, but what if we made a movie? And a lot of those student productions use things like pre-existing scripts and costumes and songs, but what we do is, we do it all from scratch ourselves. The idea was, we have so many talented kids in our building and so many great resources, what if we just pooled them together? And we grabbed the best writers, the best artists, the best actors, and we put them together, and the kids, they finance the movie, they plan it, they budget it, they location scout, they act, they edit, they write the music, they do the posters, they do the PR, they do all of it. The first year, we didn't finish it, because there's always pitfalls with this, but for the last four years, we've actually finished a feature-length film every year, completely done by the students. No other high school in the country does this annually, and we were contacted by Indiana University, because they were like, how do you do this every year, let alone with high school kids? So now IU's going to model their program after what we're doing at HSE. And we just started all over. All those kids have gone off. I've got kids at NYU and UCLA and USC studying film, and we started all over again this year on day one with 30 scripts, and we just cast the movie and we start production next week.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And that's one, I mean, he is one of the main reasons why I think every one of our schools in our district were named Gold Star Schools. I don't know if I'm misquoting that, but I think every single school, and that is the backbone and foundation of a great city. So, thank you for what you do and how you give back to our young people.
Yes.
Cecilia, yes.
And I had the honor of accepting the Champion of the Art Award for the City of Fishers, and it's just incredible what we are starting to do with regard to the arts, the performing arts and the visual arts. And it is just spectacular. I don't know, Leah, if you can share a little bit about some of the recent updates with our cultural trail and our cultural district designation.
So, as you may recall, we did submit the Nickel Plate District as a statewide cultural district to the Indiana Arts Commission. We have made it through Phase One, or I'm not sure. I think it is sort of the first round, and we'll be hosting the Art Commission Selection Committee this Wednesday in the Nickel Plate District, actually. So, we're really excited and hopeful about that, and hope to learn through this process either way, to help inform the Art Commission that we'll be established in January. So, really excited to keep working toward that.
Wonderful. It's exciting. So, congratulations to the city and to Jeremy.
Yep. Excellent. All right, moving on to the Fishers Citizens Government Academy Graduation. Dan?
For the record, Dan Dapsick, Fishers Parks and Recreation. I am the Program Manager for the Fishers City Government Academy, which is a 10-week program that gives residents here an inside look at how their local government operates. One week, they can be hanging out with our Parks and Rec Department, checking out new facilities, and learning about the role that we try and play here in our community. Another week, they could be making sure they're wearing cruddy shoes to walk out to the wastewater treatment plant and find out a little bit about what happens after you turn your faucet on and off. And then another week, they'll be visiting with Judge Hanke and talking about his philosophy and what his role is in the justice system and here in Fishers locally. This evening, I have the honor of presenting the graduates from our first-ever Fishers City Government Academy Summer Session, which we partnered with Britton Falls on. So, we have 14 graduates here that went through the program. Not all of them can make it tonight, but I want to make sure that their names are on record, because it is a significant time commitment, and they're phenomenal examples of people who just want to get to know their community better and get involved. Graduates have gone on to do a lot of things, serve on City Council, co-found Launch Fishers, just a ton of stuff, and the program means a lot to us. So, with that, Council President Zimmerman, if you don't mind joining Mayor Fadness down here. Graduates, as I read your name off, if you don't mind coming up for your customary congratulatory handshake, we'll do that. We'll get a quick picture, and then we'll meet back out in the lobby for a couple other pictures and just some follow-up. So, without further ado, if you can come up, if you're here, and join us, Marilyn Asaby, Catherine Thompson, Terry Thompson, Eric W. Smith, Gary Angeline, Lenny Scott, Connie Lightfoot, Tracy Erickson, Sam Malone, Larry Rash, Mickey Luth, Gary Van Gordon, Dan Crich, and Paul Taylor. Ashley, would you mind grabbing a picture for us? Our City Government Academy class.
Leah, I was wondering if you and Jeremy would want to come up also to get a picture with the mayor with the awards?
Go one up there with, go one up there. Get your picture.
Make sure you get that boot in the picture.
All right, moving on to the Finance Committee Report. John was going to give the updates.
Certainly. Councilor Stoller cannot be with us for our budget financing. She is our chair, and so I kind of took over, ran the meeting on October the 10th, and we discussed a number of topics, some that, two items that were passed, Item 10 on the Agenda night, which is Request to Approve the 2019 Fishers Budget. We recommended that for approval. Also, Item 15, Professional Resolution appropriate issue sewer funds, recommend that to our, to the other items, Item 11, Item 12, Item 13, Item 16, Item 18. We've not had the actual documents for us to approve, have recommendation for approval to council, so we did not approve or disapprove any, and we moved it forward to council for their approval this evening.
Thank you very much. Nonprofit Committee Report.
Thanks, Todd. Again, nonprofit committee, which consisted of myself, Cecilia Koppel, and Brad Bremer, met again this year to go ahead and put out some money, which was so graciously set aside in our budget. I want to remind everybody on this nonprofit, and the three folks who are on the committee with me, you know, we're not a foundation, we're not a trust, we're not a, you know, it's not our job to distribute tax money back out to non, you know, nonprofit groups. However, you know, with a direction that we have some money in the budget, and we feel that making sure some of those folks who are out in our community affecting a lot of residents, in other words, it's substantive, okay, and it will have an impact, was really what guided our decisions in terms of this budget. So, I'm going to read the names of the folks that got funds from us this year. There was a lot of folks who went ahead and applied again, but again, we wanted to make sure that we were being impactful and substantive as it related back to the taxpayers, who were actually, you know, that's where this money's coming from. So, without further ado, and I'll read the amounts as well, the funds that we distributed for YMI, which is Youth Mentoring Initiative, $48,200. Janus Development, $12,000. The HSE Foundation, $26,300. Hamline County YAP, $65,000, and Connor Prairie, $100,000. That is my report for this evening. Unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions or comments from council? All right, move on to the Consent Agenda.
Todd, I make a motion to approve Items 7A and 7B from the agenda.
Okay. Motion by David, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And one abstention. Pete is the abstention. All right, moving on to regular agenda, Item 8, R102218F, Request to Approve Third Amendment to Economic Development Agreement.
Thank you, members of the council. For the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development. So, back in 2016, the city entered into an economic development agreement with Central Indiana Orthopedics, and part of that agreement, we outlined a number of details, including number of jobs, size of the investment, and a timeline for the project. And so, as the CIO team got kind of dug into the design, they found some efficiencies, and then we're kind of at this season of the year where it actually makes a little bit more monetary sense to wait until you start building on the other side of winter. So, here you have a couple of details for this amendment. One of them is to extend the date for construction and completion by a calendar year, and then also, the original economic development agreement said that they would build a building no less than 40,000 square feet. Based on design efficiencies, they believe they'll be able to achieve their vision with a 35,000-square-foot building. So, before you today is an amendment to rectify those things, the construction timeline, as well as a slightly smaller building. With that, I would request that we approve the resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments from council?
I've got a question for Brandon, because I recall reading this last week, and I got the consent agenda. The original agreement was written for a building not to be under 40,000 square feet or something to that nature.
Not less than, yeah.
Yeah, not less than, so now we moved it down to 35. Did that "not less than" language accompany that?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it wasn't in our packet written that way.
Right.
It looked like they could build a two-foot-square building if they really wanted to.
Yeah.
John, like, was really the intent of this?
Right, not less than 35,000.
So, I just wanted to make sure that that language followed forward.
And I would anticipate it'll land somewhere right around 35,000 at this point, now that they've kind of designed it out.
And if there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Yeah, let's, any other, any questions or comments from the rest of council?
I'll second.
Motion to suspend by Pete. Second by, did you second? Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete.
Second.
Second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to R102118H.
This is the project for the BW Development Project on the North Ellipse. This is the lot just west of the library that is currently the parking lot. This project agreement states that, in its original form, that we would close on the property with the developer by October 31st. Again, as we kind of got into design and details, we needed just a little extra time, so this amendment is just basically a two-month amendment, and it's stating that we will close on this project no later than December 31st of this year. The BW project is still planned to get under construction yet here this year, and we hope to have some exciting announcements very, very shortly coming about some exciting tenants to call downtown Fishers home. So, with that, I would request that we approve the amendment and also change the rules to allow for that to occur.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
Do we need to suspend rules on this?
No.
Yes? Okay.
Right, Chris? No suspension?
Resolution.
Resolution.
My apologies, no.
All right. Motion to approve by Eric.
Second.
Second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
And one abstention.
Two abstentions.
So, Pete and John are abstaining. Motion passes. Moving on to 091718A, Request to Approve the 2019 City of Fishers Budget. Mr. Mayor?
Scott, for the record, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, also Lisa Bradford, Controller, is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. As a follow-up to the budget hearing that we had at the last meeting, I would just reiterate that we had our public hearing at the last council meeting. The budget has been properly noticed per state law, and tonight, before you, we're asking for final adoption of the fiscal year 2019 fiscal budget. If you notice, there is an additional document, I believe, Chris, in the budget where we have a petition to remonstrate against the budget, and we followed the state procedures associated with that, and there's a response as well. So, we would ask that you adopt that as well with the budget tonight, adhering to all state laws associated with the budget process moving forward. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the city council may have, and would ask for your support in our proposed budget for fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions or comments from council?
I want to clarify, what you asked for is, if a motion is made to approve, do we need to note that we're passing it with this remonstrance?
You can. It's more or less an administrative process. So, Indiana law supplies a format where 10 or more taxpayers can submit a timely budget objection. That objection was submitted to the city. We provided a response to that. That'll get submitted to DLGF along with our budget submission, so if you can just acknowledge it with the passing of the budget, that'll be fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget, as duly noted that there has been a remonstrance filed, and we have given an answer, so duly noted by council.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for the support.
Thank you. Moving on to 102118C.
For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The amendment before you relates to the North of North Project and the Local Income Tax Pledge. This amendment basically amends the existing pledge to allow for the creation of a junior reserve account, which can be funded by a reserve fund surety. Basically, this is more of a procedural step, as we're going to permanently finance the bond anticipation note that we did for the North of North Project, also known now as Spark Fishers. And so, this is, step is needed, as the garage is complete, but the building's not yet 100% complete.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? We will need to suspend the rules, so.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion by Pete to suspend, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve.
Passes. Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to R102218B.
All right, this before you is approves the issuance of redevelopment district bonds related to Fire Station 93. As we have discussed in some previous meetings, there is a significant capital need for some fire stations, and this will, bond will finance either the complete renovation or a substantial renovation of Fire Station 93. Are there any questions?
All right, are there any questions or comments from council?
Well, the comments I'll make, just quickly, is I want to thank certainly the mayor and the staff for going and taking the entire council on a tour, not only of kind of the city assets that we've had, been approving all along, we got to see some of the finished work down at Public Works and et cetera, et cetera, but actually toured us through some of these fire stations and, you know, not that it was a bad thing when they were built, but were a completely different, you know, municipal organization than we were when they were built, and they are in serious health decline, and they are not really a great place for our public health folks and our safety folks to work in. So, I think that really showed an open eye to certainly council that it was needed, and it's not, you know, one of those things that we take lightly when we ask taxpayers to pay for municipal buildings, but in this case, I think everybody would agree with us if they went through that process, that you want to keep those firemen's safety. And I'm the first one to tell you, they're an expensive insurance policy, but they're a great one, and we have one of the greatest organizations in the state, thanks to our chief, Steve Arusa, and his staff. But those are my comments, but I did want to thank the mayor and the staff for going ahead and doing that, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve unless there's other comments.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, so, motion by Pete. Approved. Second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
This resolution before you approves a lease between the Redevelopment Authority, the Lesser, and the Redevelopment Commission as the leasing, and basically, this will allow lease rentals to be used to pay debt service on bonds of the Redevelopment Authority. This bond is for the Nickel Plate Trail, but in addition, several road projects, such as 126th and Ford Drive, South Street Reconstruction, Allisonville Road riding from River Glen to 126th Pavement Rehab, and Cumberland Road Rehab from 106th to 116th Street.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions or comments from council?
I'd like to make a comment here. I appreciate that we need all of these things kind of rolled up and issued these bonds. I guess, I want us to make sure that, I know we're in great financial position today, but from what I'm hearing from the investment world, we've already started hedging for the next downturn, which is expected to start next year, in 12 to 20 months. And I just want us, you know, how do we fare if employment is, if unemployment is 10% and income, our income, tax income, is down 20%? As we move forward, I have no problem with these today. I just want us to be aware of what we could be facing in just a few years.
So, a couple, couple points to that. I think your concerns are warranted, and that's why I appreciate you being on the Finance Committee as we look out into the future. One of the things that I think Lisa and her team does a wonderful job with is, if you look at our CAFR, if you look at our budget, we have certain rules and procedures and policies we adhere to in terms of debt structure, debt load, debt per capita, we're always looking at, adequate cash reserve balances, overlapping debt structures, things of that nature, which frankly, the discipline that we've had adhering to best management practices in the financial sector has given us the highest rated bond rating that you can get as a municipality. But that's, the price we have to pay to keep that is vigilance. We have to continue to monitor that, and I do agree with you. One of the things that, with this debt issuance, and I think a general conversation, is what I, what I am proud of is that the investments that this council has greenlighted to date have been on transformative or long-term capital projects. This is not a community that deficit spends for the sake of deficit spending on operational expenses. We're talking about a police station that'll be here for 50 years, 70 acres of waterfront property on Geist for a new park, fire stations, road projects. These are things that if you're going to issue debt, you want them for those types of projects. The assets will outlive the debt. But to your point, I agree wholeheartedly that we need to continue to monitor and frankly, continue to try to be the lowest tax rate of any large municipality in the state of Indiana. That puts us in a strong financial position moving forward.
Yeah, I was, I would just echo that when I say, you know, obviously, if you guys have seen, when we look at the fiscal plan, we're not just looking at this year, and we're not just looking at next year. We're looking, you know, three to four years down the road, and hopefully with that, you start to anticipate those perceived downturns, and if those are, then you can start, you know, making those changes here, you know, a year before it comes to fruition of some form of economic downturn, and you can make some changes before you get behind, you know, if that comes to fruition with an economic downturn.
Lisa, if I, just some context, what's in our general fund as of right now?
I think we're anticipated, don't quote me, hopefully on the end of budget year 18 to be at about 15 million in.
15 million. And what is our, what is our policy on how much we should have?
50% of anticipate, next year's anticipated property tax.
And how much is that?
That would be about 12, 12 and 1/2. So, usually, we always significantly have a surplus in excess of our required cash reserve balance.
So, weather a storm, we have significant reserves.
Yes, we have a significant reserve policy buildup already, but then we also usually carry an amount above our reserve policy and have been for the past couple of years.
Okay. Just to kind of provide some context, other communities to the west of us, to the east of us, to the north of us, to the south of us, don't have this level of funds laid, set aside for those rainy days.
Right.
Correct? I'll make a motion to approve.
Any second, well.
That's a good point, Dan. I think our cash reserve is much more stringent than some of the other.
And I will, I will agree with Selena, that's something we've got, we've got to watch, you know, the economy, it's not going to go up and up forever.
We're in great shape.
Yeah.
I mean, I just want us to be cognizant of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I'm, motion to approve.
May I make a point?
No.
No, there's no public hearing.
Motion by, it was a motion, originally motion by John.
I seconded that.
Second by Eric, or Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to R102218D.
All right, this is essentially a procedural step. You need to ask the passage of the previous resolution. This is needed to update the economic development plan for the consolidated Fishers I-69 Economic Development Area to include the projects referenced in the bond previously.
No questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, any questions or comments from council? Okay, motion by Pete, second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to R102218E.
The resolution before you is to appropriate additional sewer wastewater funds. During the budget process for 2018, we put some software costs all to the general fund, which should have been paid some out of sewer, and to make sure the sewer utility pays its fair share, we're doing an additional appropriation to make sure they cover their software costs.
Any questions or comments from council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 102218B.
All right, that item before you approves the issuance of taxable economic development revenue bonds and the lending of these proceeds to the Town Hall Building Corp. This is pursuant to the land acquisition agreement from August of 2018 related to the downtown project.
Okay. Any, before we do that, any questions or comments from council?
Motion to suspend.
Make sure we got to suspend. Yeah, motion by Pete to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete.
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstention. Any nays? All right, motion passes. One abstention, David.
David.
David, yeah. All right. 102218A.
All right, the item for you is, again, another procedural step approving the lease between the Town Hall Building Corporation and the Redevelopment Commission, and then pledging a local income tax to payment of the lease rentals as a security related to the land acquisition.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend by Pete.
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete.
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain again.
And then David abstains. Moving on to R102218G.
All right, this item before you simply introduces the preliminary determination related to Fire Station 91 for a bond issuance related to the construction of a new headquarters, as we mentioned previously, with our fire stations. They're in drastic need of some very strong capital rehabilitation, so this bond will go for Fire Station 91, which is our headquarters. If there are no questions from council, I will step aside. our headquarters. If there are no questions from council, I will step aside as this one does require a public hearing.
Okay, questions or comments from council? Okay, I'll open it up for public hearing. If you wish to speak, have questions, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes. Please keep it to this particular topic. Mics come forward.
I didn't want to disappoint you.
Yes, I was waiting for this mic.
For the record, my name is Michael Colby. I live at 7105 Cold Lake Drive here in Fishers. And a question I have on this particular item, it's a bond for the Fire Station 91. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard the last council meeting, the mayor, I think he said that, this bond was going to be for both the Fire Station and the Nickel Plate? No? Is that, was there a change? Is there a bond separate for that that's?
Yeah, so tonight, they had several of the items, one of which was issuing a bond for the Nickel Plate, as well as several road projects. That was a prior agenda item. And then we had a separate bond issued for Station 93, and now we're onto a bond issued for Station 91.
So the R102218B, the resolution approving issuance of bond, and it was, it was Fire Station, but no Nickel Plate. And then you've got this one, which is R100228G, which is another bond for another fire station. I guess I'm missing where the bond is for the Nickel Plate.
But, I have number thirteen, Mike.
Item number thirteen, but that wasn't, that was not presented, when the bond was presented. I didn't hear it anyway. I sat in the back and listened specifically for Nickel Plate, and I didn't hear that. Maybe I'm getting old with the depth.
Sorry, it was just a pre-measure.
All right, okay.
It was.
All right, thank you.
That's all right. Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wishing to step forward and speak? You state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Um, I think this is a.
Yes, this is just a motion to have the first.
First reading, yeah.
Or have the second determination at the special council meeting on November 5th.
Okay, all right, moving on to 102218D.
Good evening. For the record, Ross Taylor, the City of Fishers Planning and Zoning Department. Before you tonight, we have our first annexation. Petition is for the Ritchie Reserve PUD. The property is located at 7877 East 106th Street. Real America seeks to annex two lots located totally on approximately 12.4 acres. The property will begin the rezoning process at the November 2018 Plan Commission. With that, staff recommends that city council holds a combined first and second reading and a public hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll step aside for that public hearing.
All right, I'll go ahead and open this up for public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this topic, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. With no one stepping forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council?
Have first reading, first and second reading, I guess.
Okay, all right.
Real quick, Ross, I just want to make sure procedurally, because I've had some questions from residents on this. So November would be the Plan Commission, and then do you have an anticipated date for the council meeting for the, the project itself?
I would probably see it coming to the January meeting if I look at the timeline correctly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to 102218E.
The next annexation in front of you is the Stations at Fishers District. The property is located at 9712 East 116th Street, previously known as the Charlie Key or the Stations PUD property. Thompson Thrift seeks to annex this one lot for approximately 1.67 acres. Similar to the previous annexation, the property will be beginning the rezoning process at the November 2018 Plan Commission. With that, staff recommends a combined first and second reading and a public hearing as well.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. With no one stepping forward, I'll go ahead and close public hearing. Any questions or comments from council?
Have first reading and second reading.
Okay, first and second reading. Moving on to 102218F.
The final annexation petition in front of you tonight is for the Wurstler property. The property is located at 15040 and 15050, East 126th Street, near the intersection of Southeastern Parkway and 126. Gary Wurstler seeks to annex the two lots, which is approximately 1.72 acres. The property was given a favorable recommendation for rezoning at the October 18th Plan Commission meeting. Council will see this next month for that rezoning. With that, staff recommends a combined first and second reading and a public hearing.
All right, I'll open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. With no one stepping forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council?
Have first and second reading.
All right, move forward. 102218G.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Megan Schaper with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is for an amendment to the planning and zoning fee schedule. So this change, this amendment was brought about by the updates to the Unified Development Ordinance that council approved back in August, and so we are just updating some of the language on the permit types in our fee schedule. I'd like to clarify that we're not changing the amount of any fees, and we're not adding any additional fees. We're simply just changing the language on some of the permit types. So we ask that you hold first, second, and third reading and approve the ordinance, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have on that.
Any questions or comments from council?
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, any unfinished or new business? Nothing? All right, we're going to open up for a community input session. You can speak on any topic. You will have a three-minute limit. You need to state your name and address for the record. I do ask that Fishers residents speak first unless, before somebody else that does not live and reside in Fishers. So if you would, if you want to speak, you can, you have three minutes. It is not a back-and-forth dialogue, so you can ask questions. We'll write those down, and if somebody has a specific response, they'll be able to provide that for you. So we'll open it up. Anybody wishing to speak, step forward. I don't see anyone stepping forward, so I'll go ahead and close it. And motion to.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.